Tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board, meeting of Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. If you would like to join tonight's meeting, and you have a smartphone, a computer, or a tablet, just use your Zoom application. Tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you don't have any of those, or don't have access to one, but still wish to join, you can do so via phone by dialing 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. We are going back to our previous format with Zoom in that anybody who wishes to participate via Zoom can do so in the full capacity, not just for public comment. These are the new, we're going back to the older guidelines now that it's required to wear a mask at town hall, and some people feel more comfortable being in their own home. Please note that tonight's agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at tonight's meeting, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I will open our agenda by asking if there's any public comment from the board this evening?
None.
I have none.
Mr. Jeffries, who is joining us remotely?
No.
None, okay. Any public comment from the public? If those are you on Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to speak for a public comment. Do we have anybody?
No one raising their hand.
Okay, nobody raising their hand. So, do you have any announcements?
I do, just announcement about curbside trash and recycling. There was a post yesterday by E.L. Harvey that trash and recycling would be delayed one day this week. That was for private subscription, people who use E.L. Harvey, not the town's curbside trash and recycling. So, it was posted on Facebook today, and we shared on news and announcements, so if you can spread the word, trash is on schedule this week. We have been working with E.L. Harvey all day on making sure that people that were messed and did not put out their trash would be picked up.
Yeah, they did, as somebody who missed that, because they did post it, it was not clear that it was for their private, and so everybody took it one way. So, we really need to, they need to up their game on communication about how they're working, because it doesn't help that there've been, obviously, COVID issues with their drivers that has caused some delays, and now this miscommunication. So, it's, there's a lot of people out there who have started to get a sour taste, and I don't want that to happen. I really want them to turn that around.
Yep, we have a dress communication with them. I would just ask for everyone's tolerance and patience right now, as we're all experiencing difference in how we operate, and due to COVID, labor shortages that they're definitely experiencing. Just last week, they had over 30 employees out, so I would just ask for everyone's tolerance.
The only announcement I have is, as you can tell, we are back in, wearing masks in town hall. The town manager made that decision, along with, I'm assuming with Nishoba Regional and our own Board of Health consultation with them.
Based on the rising cases.
Right, so on the cases. So, we are here, and that's why we've opened up Zoom to be full participation. I will make a comment that for all those people who have elected and appointed positions, that during this whole thing, during this whole pandemic, which is now, you know, entering its, well, soon to enter its third year, that the work of the town still needs to get done. And so, we're trying to open up as many options as we can, to either you can come here and wear a mask, you can participate remotely, but I find it remiss that there are some people who will do neither. And if you are out there and have an appointed or elected position, and you decided, I won't come to town hall because I'm not going to wear a mask, and I'm also not going to participate with Zoom, I would think that you should reconsider your public servant position to the town, and think about either changing your position or resigning, because we still need stuff to get done. And some of these boards and some of these committees have timelines in the things that come before them, that pandemic or not, the state has the deadlines that these petitions have to be followed. I mean, whether it's a building application, or whether it's conservation things, there are things that have timelines. So, we do need to perform the service of the town. Okay, next agenda item is the workshop for the old primary school. We have commuting meeting, community meeting number two on landscape design for 30 School Street, with our landscape architect Ray Dunnett, who is with us here to present two conceptual plans to the board and the public.
Thank you.
Just so people are aware, we're going to have Ray do his, I should say, Mr. Dunnett, sorry.
That's okay.
Do his presentation, then we'll have questions from the board first, and then we will open it up to the public for their questions, as we see the town manager is monitoring the Zoom meeting, so she'll inform me when somebody is there raising their hand. So, again, Mr. Dunnett.
I'm just going to rotate a little bit, so I can see the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board for the meeting today. As you mentioned, this is our second community meeting, and we're hoping to get a lot of great input this evening that will lead us into the final master plan, which is scheduled, the next meeting will be scheduled next month. We'll go on to the next slide, please. So, our agenda this evening is just to review our timeline, quickly make a few remarks on what we heard in community meeting number one, talk a little bit about the survey, which we've distributed to the board, the results of that. Then we'll share the manifestation of those comments from the public and the board in terms of concepts. We have two concepts to present to you tonight, and then we'll show you some sample images of what we're thinking for 30 School Street site. Next, please. So, where we are in community meeting number two, we first started last month in December. Since then, we've met with a working group of town officials, safety, the police chief, fire chief, planner, DPW, and then got some of their input, did a site walk with the board to get input from that direction as well, and presented our findings at the first community meeting. Since then, we've done a survey, got some great responses, and prepared some designs, which is highlighted in the yellow circle, tonight's meeting. From tonight, we can discuss if we want to do a second survey. We're happy to do that with the concepts that we present tonight, get more input, and then we'll develop a nice cost estimate to give you an idea of the cost and a final plan. And our goal is to finish this before the end of February. Next, please. So, in community meeting number one, we talked about the important history of the old primary school, and how important it is to commemorate that history. We gave a lot of visual inspiration for what this park could be, and we talked about the condition of the, the existing condition of the old primary school, and some of the issues that have surfaced from a safety and security point of view. Next, please. We did an online survey, which Heather, town manager, posted up on Facebook. We got 36 responses, which I think is pretty good, and a lot of the responses kind of reinforced the idea of this being a park with strolling paths, concerts, farmers' markets, and, you know, there were some other ideas out there, but we did an analysis of all the responses, which will be on the next slide, I believe. So, the open space, this is a Word Cloud, which kind of highlights the important things brought up in the responses, community space, natives, farmers' markets, concerts, gatherings. Bathrooms was also a highly rated thing to include in the plans. Next, please. So, now I would like to just review two concepts that we developed based on this input. And we'll look at the whole site, all the way up to Mass Ave first, and then we'll zoom in on the park space. One of the key wishes was to sort of provide more organized parking and create a stronger entrance into the park off Mass Ave. There's a huge amount of paving in that opening, which was dedicated towards the old fire station that was there that's no longer needed, and that can become more green space. So, what we're trying to do is collect people from Mass Ave and safely bring them to the park on concrete sidewalks with crosswalks to provide separation between vehicles and pedestrians, past the historic society into the park. So, here, we've worked with our engineer to develop more organized parking. They've analyzed this with using a template for a fire truck, buses, large vehicles, to be able to make the turning radii. And what we're thinking is a nice curved edge that can be plowed against. The DPW director wanted something that was easy to plow, so we showed a very simple curb layout with paint striping to show how the spaces are demarcated. But from Rob, he was saying that he wanted a nice clean edge, which we provided here. We've also provided some parking spaces to the east, right behind the Ritter Building, which also connect, provide a safe pedestrian connection all the way to the park. Chances are, this parking lot's not going to be full all times, but during the farmer's market, I've heard there can be many cars, and this will provide some relief for that. We also have a couple of handicap spots right close to the park, and a drop-off area for people who are just either going to the farmer's market and dropping someone off, then finding a parking space. It is a one-way circulation around the parking lot until you get to that residential garage in the Verizon Building, where it becomes two-way traffic. Our goal was always to minimize the amount of paving, so in this scheme, we're actually removing paving, which is beneficial for the environment and stormwater runoff. As we enter the park, I think we can go to the next slide, which is a little bit of an enlargement of the park area. Let me go to the next. No, doesn't want to, doesn't want to work. I can talk to this one, it's fine. So, most importantly, we recognize the historic importance of the old primary school by demarcating that with, here we go, demarcating the stone foundation. There was a strong desire to have a shade structure here for, not only for the farmer's market, but also for the recreation programming that you have, that could benefit from having a shaded space. We have benches in there, and some kind of interpretive sign, which will commemorate the historic nature of that building and what it was, so people will understand that. As you move up the park towards what right now is the septic field, we've located a restroom building that was a highly desired factor in the design. We've looked at a couple of different options for that, either sort of an off-the-grid system that would have to be cleaned and maintained, or something that is hooked up to sewer water, that kind of thing. So, we will talk about that in a little bit. And throughout the park, we have like a kind of meandering strolling path with benches, pollinator gardens. And then, towards the back of the site, seemed to lend itself well to having an amphitheater space. This amphitheater space would have a stage or a bandstand, which I'll show you. The hillside that's back there right now works very well with sort of natural stone, we're thinking like big granite blocks for seating, which can be very expensive and very naturalistic looking. And then vegetating that whole border along to the south, where there's some residential property to buffer any sound or noise from the park. We would clean up the woodland edge to make it attractive, bring in some new shade trees, which are always nice. In addition to the benches, we've also shown a picnic area with picnic tables. That was one of the comments that we received from the board to incorporate. And that's basically option A. We'll come back to these at the end, so people can bring up some questions. Next, please. So, option B, the parking pretty much remains, the parking and the vehicular circulation into the park remains the same. In this particular scheme, we did not show a shade shelter, but we showed an open area for the farmer's market tents. Instead of having a band around the building, we're actually thinking of having a raised seat wall, like 18 inches high, that uses the brick from the old primary school, and a nice stone cap on it to prevent any water penetration, and a place to sit. We also have the, here we have interpretive signage, we have the restrooms, we have the picnic tables. The only major difference with this is that instead of the concert area, we've shown a more passive, natural, I don't want to call it a playground, but like a place for kids to climb on rocks and logs and that kind of thing, more for the little kids to experience nature. We also have a pollinator garden in this scheme. Might be a good time to go to the next slide, which is an enlargement showing this, some benches that overlook the nature play as well. In both schemes, we have buffered from the residential area to the south. We have 12 to 15 benches, which will all be accessible with a spot adjacent to it for a wheelchair, open lawns, not a super-high maintenance landscape with shrubs and that kind of thing. It was very important for us, I'll bring up, from a security point of view, to have open views into the site, so everything would be fairly tall, so that the views can be maintained. And we were showing pedestrian lighting in the site, so that we avoid having a hangout situation, and the park can be surveilled in the evenings. Next, please. So, you know, what we've heard and what we've translated into a couple of concepts is it's important to recognize the historical nature of the site. A shade shelter was desired, bandstand and amphitheater. The farmer's market could be moved to the site, and it would accommodate the farmer's market, strolling paths, site furnishings, trees, lawns, pollinator garden, nature play, comfort station, lighting, and improved parking, which I think we check all the boxes on both schemes. Next, please.
Sorry?
So, just to provide some visuals of what this might look like, the interpretive signage, the low seat walls, and the paved outline of the building can be, you know, using some brick from the old building might be a nice way to commemorate it in the walls, and then using a stone for foundation, which tends to read better in the landscape. Next, please. Back one. This particular shade structure is gigantic, and perhaps, you know, we'd have to work on the proportions of it, but this is a timber shade structure that comes preassembled, it's just, you know, I mean, not preassembled, comes as a kit of parts and then assembled on-site. It's a modular system, it comes in many different sizes, you can get different types of shingles. But the idea, like I said, was we want the views to, we don't want this to obstruct views into the park, so it needs to be very open. We can also look at metal as an option as well. Next, please. The bandstand can be of the same language. I think it's nice that the two structures talk to each other. This one happens to be a wooden structure that matches the timber shade structure. It does come with walls, however, I feel that that might be cross-purpose to our surveillance and security issues. Perhaps it's just an open structure, and we have planting behind it to buffer any sound. And then, there's an idea of an amphitheater with stone set into the hillside. This is a little bit more fancy than what we're thinking, but gives you the idea of what a terraced hillside would look like. Next, please. Of course, the farmer's market, you're all familiar with that. Next, please. This is what we're thinking, and, you know, in this scheme with the nature play is just very simple logs, you know, low maintenance, and fun to play on. And I, you know, I know that there are plenty of playgrounds in town, we just wanted to show kind of an option for you. Next, please. Strolling paths, we want to plant nice, beautiful shade, you know, heritage shade trees that provide four-season interest. The lawns can be used for events or programs, and a small pollinator garden. We were very careful to locate our benches away from the pollinator garden, because they tend to attract bees. But, next, please. Just an example of a strolling path. Next, please. Picnic tables and benches, of course. We've shown four or five picnic tables, and, you know, maybe a dozen benches. They can be of different characters, historic or something more contemporary. One of our big conversations with the working group was, you know, how would a restroom or comfort station work? We had suggested this, both of these are prefabricated. The one on the left is purportedly very low maintenance and vandal-proof. It's made out of powder-coated steel that with a graffiti-resistant coating. It's just a one person, and it can be hooked up to existing utility or new utilities, or can be off-the-grid in the park. There are also wood structures that, if we want to have a family of wood structures, that also come off the shelf, but in order to keep costs down, it's probably good to think about prefabricated comfort stations. This is made by the same company that makes those, the shade structures that we showed before. The other conversation is, do we have, you know, two bathrooms for each gender, or just one kind of, you know, for everyone? Next, please. Lighting is important. We can do LED lighting, which will provide, you know, adequate lighting for safety with low power requirements. Also, we want to be cognizant of the neighbors and make sure that the light is focused down on the paths, which both of these do. The one to the left is sort of a contemporary light. The one on the right is the ones that they use in Boston, the acorn lights, which are more historic. We've shown them on our plan about 60 feet on center, which should be adequate. There's a minimum amount of light that needs to be cast in order for safety. Next, please. So, we can open it up to the board's thoughts. One thing I would like to preface is, you can like elements from either scheme. It's not one or the other. They can, the final result can be a mixture of a synthesized result of both options, but we can open it up for conversation and answer any questions.
Sure. So, I'll open it up to the board first.
Sure, I just had a couple of questions I scribbled down, Mr. Dunnett. One, how many parking spaces did you come up with?
Good question. Can we go back to that slide? We have at least the same number of spaces. We added spaces down at the Ritter.
Yeah, no, I see.
When talking with Rob, it wasn't so much that we needed more spaces, but it needs to be better organized, because right now, it's kind of a free-for-all. So, I'll have to get back to you on those precise numbers, but we did add, we cleaned up the edge along the historic society.
Yep.
And we sort of cleared, and I don't know how that works, it's removing paving up there, but we squared it off, and we initially, when we initially did this, we had like some more parallel parking going down to School Street, and he did not want that. So, everything is like right angle, and it was, it seemed like maintenance of it and plowing was more important, but I'll have to get back to you on the exact count.
Okay. The other thing I noted is, in the option A, you kept the existing pathway. I'm inferring for easy access to the proposed bandshell, and you're putting a new previous asphalt surface on that.
Yep.
Are all the pathways accessible, will they be wide enough to be accessible to a vehicle?
Yes, on this scheme, we did, we didn't present this, but we did grade, do the grading on the site to make sure that all the pathways work, and they need to be less than one foot and 20.
Yep.
We were able to achieve an accessible loop here. On the second scheme, we were not able to grade it. The walkway, the walkway that goes along the residential property line, we had to put in some stairs there.
Yep.
But, pretty much, on this one, you can But pretty much on this one, you can make a complete loop around, around the park.
Was your question?
That was important. So, the width, so getting back to the width, it is, yeah.
It, it's accessible to, to an ambulance or something like that if the knee arose or something like that.
We did not, that's a good question. We did not, we, we were trying to limit the amount of paving, so an ambulance.
Well, even if it's a stone dust path, I'm just trying to make sure that there's enough accessibility to get an emergency vehicle.
Yes, yes. It's wide open to, to get, to just drive right in there.
Okay.
But we did not, we did not create a road, a 10-foot-wide road.
Yeah.
If that's something that the board is thinking about, we, we can discuss.
I think we'll defer, well, I don't want to say we. I would, I would like to hear from the public safety officials on that, but I'm with Mr., with Mr. Dwyer on that. I had that question too about the, the, you know, access to the rear.
Yeah, so that pathway that goes to the, the shade pavilion is wide enough for, but that's as far as they can get. They can't drive all the way down to the, the bottom of the hill there.
And then on option B, it shows within the footprint of the outline, of the stone outline that commemorates, commemorates the building. It looks like there's 15, are, are those benches?
Can we go to?
On option B?
No, those are like tents.
No, those are tents, those are, those are the farmer's market tents, which are not.
Oh, okay, okay.
Which are not part of our.
Under that.
We were thinking of that being like a permeable paving of some, some kind, like a unipaving to formalize that space.
So, then on option A under the pavilion, would you consider, would you consider that just open or would you consider?
That has like a concrete pad under the, under the shade structure, similar to what I showed in the picture.
Multi-use, whatever we envisioned for that.
Yep.
Okay.
And, you know, I was, wanted to get feedback on if they, if you wanted the shade shelter or, you know, it, that could be.
Yeah, no, personally, I, I love the idea of a pavilion and I, I've lived in communities where, that had those, but they actually had benches there that people could, you know, reserve benches for, for gatherings and stuff like that, for, you know, parties, things like that, so.
Yeah, you could do your high school graduations and all that kind of stuff.
Exactly. Yep. That's all I had.
Okay.
Mr. Franco.
Yes, thank you. I know you indicated that 36 respondents was, was decent. You have the experience to know whether that's a decent number or not. I, I think it's low for a town of this size and a project of this magnitude and, but in any event, those 36 responses, having reviewed the summaries of them, the charts, did cover many ideas. And, and I think you did a nice job of incorporating these into your two options, short of preserving the entire building, of course, which I think there's, you know, very small, it seemed even among the respondents, a very small percentage. So, I like that seat wall idea, but I did want to ask just how that actually works. Would, would, would that wall just be, the existing wall be cut to height or would you, when you say reuse the brick, would you be tearing the building down and then reusing the brick to build anew the seat wall?
The idea would be to, to rebuild it because we don't know what the foundations are.
Right.
If the foundations are good, we could use it, but it would be, yeah, it would be the core and we would veneer over the, the, they, they may be separate projects that we would need to have, you know, need to coordinate. But if it was part of our project, then we, we would have to do that analysis, you know, do a test pit next to the building to see what's underneath the ground.
Okay. And just one other question. I, I, speaking of elements from both, I like both the pavilion and the seat wall.
Yeah.
And, you know.
We can do that.
Could those be incorporated into the same design?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Now, we weren't thinking the walls were going all the way around, just on the ends, but we could do them all the way around as well if, if that was.
Whereas I believe if you just marked the perimeter in stone at ground level, I believe that was all around, was it not?
Yes, that was all the way around.
Okay.
The wa, the walls on option B were just on the ends, but the north and south end, but we can carry them all the way around if that's something, that, an idea that resonates with you.
Yeah, yeah. No, yeah, not that, yeah, okay, thank you. I, I don't have anything else at the moment.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first, I do have some comments, but first I have a question. As you look at the difference between option A and option B, and it seems as if the primary areas where there are changes, if you wouldn't mind just answering, what's the difference in cost implications between option A and option B for the variances?
I'm not, I'm not completely prepared to, to talk about the final cost at this time, but I will say that we have done some preliminary estimates and the two, the two options are quite similar. And I'm not sure exactly why, but they, they kind of came out, they kind of came out very closely and we, we also put a very, you know, sort of large contingency number on it since we're at this stage, like 15%, but I'm going to get back to the board with the, once we have the professional cost estimator go through our work and, and review it and, and, and we sort of have the options a little more hammered out, we'll get those to you. I will say that, I will say though, that there's not a huge difference in cost. The, the, the expensive, you know, the expensive items are, and, and this is something, you know, that was a little bit out of our scope, but we, 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 we looked at it was School Street itself and all the curb and the asphalt work that needs to happen there was quite expensive. Then the next expensive thing were the shelters, the structures themselves, the, the shade structure, the bandstand and the, and the restroom. So, you know, in this one, we have a little more paving. You know, we paved the inside of the, the, the school footprint, but they're, they're relatively, they're relatively similar. The, the, I think the main difference between the two are the, are the, you know, the, the structures and, and, and the play area.
Okay. You know, my comments are that I, I would like to see a little bit more parking. I understand Rob's feedback about not wanting to see parking along School Street, but, um, you know, my thoughts are actually that that would probably be a good location. I, I would like to see a kind of a net gain in parking, not just a continuation of what we currently have, but also, you know, kind of future planning for growing town, growing community. And, you know, so as you look along School Street, I think that maybe there's some opportunity there for, for some additional parking.
Yes, that central, that central island that we have could accommodate more parking, but once again, we were, we were kind of going by the guideline that he wanted a straight, straight edge to plow, so we didn't have, we didn't have an indentation on that side, but I think you certainly could get, you know, eight or nine more spaces there.
Yeah, I think that would really be beneficial. So, generally, I liked option A more. I liked the location of the amphitheater. I liked the plans for the, the school building. I'm not, I heard Mr. Franco's comments, but I'm, I'm on the opposite end of that. I wasn't, not a fan of that seat wall that goes a full perimeter. I think it's limiting in some ways. So, like I said, the amphitheater, the, what the plans are for the school building, also the location of the Pollinator Meadow. I did like the location of the picnic tables and option B of those being a little closer to the road area. So, I did, I did like that change. You discussed the two different options for the restrooms. I think, I think the Portland Lou's seem to make a lot of sense to me and, you know, maybe two of those may be beneficial. I don't know if they need to be gendered, but I think just having two perhaps available. And I also like the idea of the pavilion and the, and the bandstand.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will add my comments, which were, are kind of a mix of everybody's. So, the first one, the first question I have is approximately, what did you envision? Not an actual number, but just at least a range for the seating for the amphitheater bandshell area. How many people do you think that would be able to be seated there?
That's a good question. We didn't really do those numbers, but I would ask, I would ask for a programmatic number maybe from you and we can accommodate that, but.
We should, we should find out how many people come to the band concerts.
You know, maybe 50, 100, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, some people don't have to sit on a, they could sit on this, on a grassy slope as well.
Right. Well, we just want to make sure that we can accommodate at least what we get now.
Yep.
At the band concerts.
Yep. If someone could provide me with those numbers, I can make it happen.
I think someone on the Zoom call could probably provide that tonight.
Okay. And if not, we can get it to you.
Great.
So, I did like the, I liked the amphitheater area. I loved the bandshell. You talked about the, in one of your follow-up picture slides, you talked about being able to skin the bandshell. It would be nice to have removable panel wall, you know, not, you know, just basically plastic walls that you can hang and secure, but then remove, just so in inclement weather you can, you know, you can put it on, but for the most part, they would be removed. I like the, the stone seating in the amphitheater. I love the organic shape of the whole, of the whole, both options. Of the two options, I, again, obviously like the amphitheater. I like the shade pavilion. I don't, I'm not particularly a fan of the open space that we put tents in because that, I think the shade area gives you use way more often. I do like the cap, the, the cap walls from option B and I think that you, you know, I think if you're going to promote conversation, if anything, I would probably make the corners, first of all, they're structurally more sound.
That's a good idea.
And then the corners of the whole building, then you can have people sit and talk to each other instead of having everybody line up in a line.
That's a really good idea.
I like Mr. Jeffries' idea of moving the picnic benches to the front area instead of the back. If we can get more, I mean, parking is not the, the biggest thing, but if we can get some more parking, that would be helpful, especially if we're looking at people coming in to use the amphitheater. I mean, I realize some of the parking can be used at the Ritter because when we're having events at this, in this area, there probably is nothing going on at the Ritter because it's usually at night or on a weekend. I want, and option B, you know, Mr. Dwyer talked about the safety, public safety vehicle access to the rear. That side, the one at the bottom of the drawing, the one that's next to the residential area in option B is not there at all. So, I don't know how you'd get to the back, maybe just through that straight access?
Well, there's an existing driveway back there now, which, which we could, which we, we could keep. It's, it's just unfortunately too steep to be accessible.
Okay.
But it would be nice to be able to drive to the back of that bandstand if someone wants to unload equipment or, and one thing I didn't mention is, you know, all of these, we've looked at pricing for, you know, electrifying the bands, you know, providing outlets there and upgrading the electric system. We, we're going to need water and sewer to the comfort stations, so those utilities. We did not include a, you know, a bubbler or a bottle filler. We could, if that was something that somebody wanted.
Yeah, I think a fountain is probably not a bad idea, but I would put that near the comfort station, probably.
Mm-hmm.
As far as the, the, the restrooms, I certainly would not be an advocate for, since they're only single unit, or even if we built our own building, which I'm really torn about which one, but I think we'd only want two anyway, so therefore I think they should be unisex. If there's only one person, it can be in there at a time anyway. It would be no different than using a restroom in your, in somebody's house.
Yep. So, I'm, I'm sorry, was that, did, you're saying one is okay or do you want?
No, I think we should get two.
Two, okay.
But they should not be sexed. They should both be unisex.
Two unisex, yep.
I just don't know. I, I know we should have two, ability to, to facilitate two people, whether it's in a fixed building, you know, a fixed building or one of the Portland Lou's as you had.
Yep.
I, I don't know that I know enough about them in the benefit.
Okay.
But otherwise, I really like the whole idea and the whole look of this. It'd be interesting to get, you know, renderings from, from ground level, what this would look like.
Yes, that's, we, we do that at the, at the end.
And one of these things, you know, to, to get people involved in this, I can, I can certainly see having people wanting to donate if they want to put seats, memorial benches and memorial bricks for brick, brick walkways and things like that. That would be excellent.
Okay.
So, we did get a response. I asked Ms. Archibald, she's on the call, and typically there were between 100 and 150 people attending the band concerts.
150, okay.
Um, that doesn't include, there's about 30 musicians as well.
Right.
Okay.
But.
We'll, we'll shoot for 200.
Yep.
Yeah, there could be an uptick in the attendance too if, at this new facility that's, a lot of people complain about the parking at the existing base.
Right.
Also, you know, I think that covers it.
As long as, yeah, if people, I'm trying to look back here at the, you know, like that loop, the upper loop from option A, that, you know, that bean-shaped loop in the top, you could probably put seats there and listen if you couldn't see.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just, if I could also add, Mr. Chair, if I had to choose, if we were forced to make a choice right now between these two options, I am also inclined toward option A. I really like the amphitheater idea. I, I like the whole look of that and the bandshell. So, I mean, you know, sort of like option A with seat walls is kind of where I am.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm very much with you on that.
Yep, okay. And one, one more restroom.
Say again?
One more restroom.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
For clarification on, on the idea of seat walls, Mr. Chair, you had mentioned doing the corners of the building is, and just so I get some clarity from Mr. Franco, are you saying the full perimeter being a wall or are you saying just kind of the corners of the building being a wall and the rest being something else?
I, I recommended that it just be the corners, so the four corners may be extended six foot in either directions, eight foot in either direction, so you'd have four corners and then the rest of the building would be, you know, open to walk between them.
Okay. I think that would be tasteful.
I could get behind that idea, maybe 10 feet, but.
I'm just throwing out a number.
I like, I like that idea.
Yeah.
Disappointed I didn't think of it first. That's a great idea.
Yeah, and just to clarify for Mr. Jeffries' purpose, Jeffries' purposes too, I, I didn't even myself ever contemplate like having the entire perimeter be a seat wall, you know, with the original openings, you know.
No, and we didn't show it that way either.
Yeah. You know, I think that that would be an obstruction, that would be, that would be tough, yeah.
We don't want it to be an impediment. Yep.
There's a couple of comments in the chat and then open it up to questions, okay.
If you want to read the comments in the chat.
We'll do. Chris Sullivan, who's in the Parks Commission, said, "Mr. Dwyer brings up a great point about access to the bandshell, not only for public safety, but also for any performer to bring in gear, sound, et cetera, for events without needing to carry too far from the parking lot." And Ray, you had said that that side access point would be wide enough for vehicles.
Yeah, it's currently a driveway, so we'll keep that a driveway. At, at the, you know, at the expense of possibly having a complete loop, an accessible, complete accessible pedestrian loop around, around the, we'll have to figure it out, but I don't think currently it's, it's ADA accessible.
Okay. And there was one other comment. Ginny Albertson asks, "I would request that the new trees to be planted be native to Worcester County."
Be native to Worcester County?
Native, yeah.
I just want to make, yeah, I agree. I, I, all the plant things I think should be native.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm gonna, okay.
So, if anybody, I'm going to open it up to the public if you would like to comment on the two options. Mr. Beardmore.
Evening.
Good evening.
I, I just want to, to offer, and I think you've done really great work here. I'm, I'm getting excited to see this come to fruition. I, I think that we need to emphasize and prioritize and modify to get more parking in here. Uh... Um, I, I just want to, um, to offer, and I, I think you've done really great work here. I'm, I'm getting excited to see this come to fruition. Um, I, I think that we need to emphasize and prioritize and modify to get more parking in here. Um, and that could be potentially to the detriment of some of these, you know, beautiful arced walkways that you have, uh, designed in here right now. Um, perhaps squaring off the park end of the parking space and doing away with that island and just creating more parking. And, and my reason for thinking that, um, is first of all, if you're going to have an event with a hundred and fifty spectators and thirty, um, thirty band, uh, members, you're going to vastly exceed the number of parking spaces that you have lined into this space right now. Um, and we could potentially create another parking hazard, um, just in a different place. If, if we don't, uh, accommodate as much parking as we possibly can. But also, you know, we don't know what the long-term, long-term game plan is for the Ritter Building. Uh, and there may be an opportunity for some commercial uses or applications for that building down the road that may benefit from having additional parking, municipal parking in an adjacent lot that you can walk, uh, to the Ritter Building from. Uh, and so I think that, you know, by, by maximizing the available parking in that area, uh, we could potentially reap benefits that, um, that go beyond just the, um, the public recreation benefits that, that this park is going to bring us. Thank you.
Thank you.
To that point, Mr. Dunnetts, I, I think that one area, if I look at concept A, that's there. If you look at the, the, the seven spots in the inside, the turnaround.
Yup.
The seven spots on the left, if you, since we're having a lot of green space in the space itself, if you take that island and you make, pull in from the other side as well, you could double that parking.
Absolutely. Yeah, and the other thing I was thinking too, near the Ritter Building, we've got five or six spaces down there. We could have more spaces on the other side of that, that driveway, um, without doing any, there's a, there's a beautiful tree there, but, um, I think we can add spaces back, back there. One of, one of the concepts or one of the, the, the drivers of this design was we wanted to keep the view of the park open and not have cars parked in front of the park.
Sure.
We could add parking in front of the park at the expense of, you know, here's a beautiful, uh, green space, park, um, you know, wide open views, but, um, there, there could be more parking there as well.
Well, I think, I think that, yeah, I would, I agree with you there. I think that the two, the two handicap parkings that you have there, I wouldn't put anything else in front of the, the main, that, that trident of, of three paths that come together. I think you really want that open for lots of different reasons, not only aesthetic. I think if you put cars in front of there and park there, then you start really making it difficult to get into the place.
And it's difficult to, to see maybe from here, but there's quite a bit of topography below those handicap parking spaces.
Okay.
So, in, if we were to extend the parking lot and square it off there, it would require retaining walls and, and that kind of thing. So we tried to, you know, not, not interrupt the site too much that way. But, um, I, I certainly see your point about the island. We could add more spots there and, and on the Ritter property, you know, maybe fifteen more spots.
Yup.
I don't think we're going to get to.
Right now, they're like thirty, if these are, if those are accurate, you know, when they're. I don't think we're going to get enough to, you know, to fit. Make this a, a substantial municipal park.
Can maximize.
Parking lot, but.
Yup.
It'll be better.
If I could also, I mean, I understand the point about not wanting to have parking on the school street side, but if on both sides there were angled parking spaces, would, that would reduce the overall width that would be required for parking, you know, like, for example, at a forty-five degree, we'd be talking about point seven, is that what that is? Cosine of forty-five, is that point seven?
We, we did, we did look at that, or we had the engineers look at that, and they, they said there wasn't a huge benefit, but I'm not sure why.
Okay.
Um, you know, part of, part of the way this layout worked out was that we put a template of the turning radius of a fairly large fire truck. Uh, we don't know what equipment you have, but one of those two-part deals, um, to, to ma- and it's got a fairly wide sweep.
Yup.
So, um, we, we tried to, you know, in my attempt to try to minimize paving, you know, we followed that sweep of that, of that fire truck.
Well, I think, I think the fire chief would automatically come back and if we can't turn around there, that's, that's, that's going to be flagged.
Yeah, yeah. We have all the data, so.
Something I had not considered in my parking analysis there is that, I, I didn't think about that aspect, yeah.
Yeah. And we've, we've changed that little, so that person that lives, uh, in the house below there has to, has to go to the right because it's all one-way and then go into their driveway from around the parking lot rather than driving right up School Street because we've narrowed, we've narrowed the road to sixteen.
I'm sure when no one's there, they're not going to do that.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Dwyer.
I'd just like to weigh in on, uh, the parking a bit. Um, one of the things we talked about early on was, uh, using pervious pavers, uh, for, or, uh, you know, the green pavers in areas that you maybe have overflow parking for events. So I could see something like that being an option on the other side of the island, uh, for overflow events. Also in the area where, uh, we're narrowing School Street at the entrance because it's so wide now. Having that area on the edge kind of being a, a overflow parking area where it's still, it's still green during, during the year, but if we need to use it, i- it can support it. Uh, and that way, we're, we're maintaining some of the aesthetic, uh, without, uh, and also gain, gaining some additional parking.
If, if the space is there, I, 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 I'm with it. We have to be, we have to be cognizant of the fact that that's a residence too. So the fact that it's a road right now, they don't really have much of a choice, but if we make it to the people are allowed to park there, I just don't, you know, we, we have to be, just be mindful of that.
Sure.
Yeah, but I, I'm not against looking at any option.
Yeah, we, we, we looked at, we looked at that. I was looking at that for the inside of the, the outline of the school, but. It's not, it's not an accessible material, you know, quote, accessible.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, somebody with a cane or something couldn't. So we, we, but, but I agree, like that whole area in front of the, the school area could be parked.
Right. I mean, and, and my other thought on parking is the, there's other parking in the area within a short walk, and we've done a lot of wa- work on the sidewalks in the area, so i- i- it's, it's accessible and, you know, i- if you have to walk a little bit for a major event, you know, one, once or twice a year, that's, that's not a deal breaker. I'd rather have, have to walk in, for a special event than to, you know, create more paving than necessary.
I, I agree. It's a balance, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yup.
And we've cleaned up the edges with the sidewalks and the curbs, so, you know, right now, it's a little ragged along the edges and.
Is there anybody else on the Zoom meeting who would like to comment? While we're waiting to see if anybody does, I, I want to say that I'm really pleased with the two.
Oh, thank you.
Two designs and the options we have in the discussion that happened after that because I think that, you know, not only will this, these, either of these options or some combination of them put this property to better community use, I think it'll be a beautiful, done right. I think it has all the elements of being really a great aesthetic place as well as a usable place for people all times of year. And, you know, even, even in the winter, I think, I could see it on light snow. It'd be a beautiful place just to, just take a walk and just. Whether it's for people who live close by, who can walk there, or people who are, you know, people who work for the town that just go out and have a quick walk, or people who drive there and park and get used to, you know, just to get out of the house. I think it would be, I really like the elements of it. I like the organic nature of it. I like, I, I really would be interested in seeing, you know, the floor from the ground, what that would look like from different scenes.
We'll do a nice rendering for that.
Michael Ray has this hand.
Michael Ray.
Yes, and, uh, I just want to, I agree with everything you just said, Mr. Alonso, and, uh, to Ray, I think that this, this plan really is excellent. Um, what, what I would, as we go into the last phase here, um, I would like to look at opportunities for us to engage the community with some of the planning. I think, uh, Tom, you had already mentioned about, um, park benches, you know, having members of the community donate them. But we also have different groups of the community. There's a pollinator group, and perhaps there's an opportunity here for, uh, different groups to kind of take, I wouldn't say ownership, but take responsibility similar to the Turkey Hill Gardeners, you know, kind of take responsibility for certain areas, perhaps the pollinator garden, uh, as well as, you know, perhaps there's a school project, um, for the interpretive sign and how that can look. So really just kind of, you know, really, I guess, trying to out, not, I wouldn't say outsource, but that's essentially what it is. Um, kind of outsourcing some of these responsibilities of the community just to increase that engagement and that sense of ownership of, of this, you know, being something that everyone's contributed to in some kind of way, or a lot of people have.
Agreed. Uh, we got another comment from Chris Sullivan, who says, let me use this. It says, "The pavilion could be used in winter to cover a community skating area with a temporary rink. A nice add to the center of town." So that's the kind of, I think it's an excellent idea, and I, I know people set them up in their backyards and areas. Uh, I've never set one up. I'm not really an ice skater, but I know people do that, and I think it would be a great addition. This is the kind of thinking that I think we want people to provide to us, to make it a year-round community area. That's the whole point of this. So thank you, Chris, for that, uh, for that comment.
Ray, just to follow up on that, you said the, underneath the pavilion structure would be concrete?
Or nicer paving. Yeah, I mean, it would be paved so that we don't create mud, uh, and it has to be accessible.
Okay.
Um, you know, one scheme I showed pervious unit paving, um, it could be, it could be that kind of paving underneath. We could also, you know, I think in the last meeting, we talked about, you know, framing the posts with the brick from the school building might be a nice way to, to recognize the, the school as well. But, um, the, the one that I showed you from Waymouth, uh, that's, they just have concrete underneath, which provides, like, you know, if you were to do skating, you would probably want to have the concrete rather than.
Yes.
A permeable.
Yup.
Loose paper. So it's really, and, and the concrete will be less expensive, not necessarily more attractive, but.
And the pavilion, the one you showed with all, beside the fact that the arches are beautiful, but they take up space, and th- those posts were way closer than I had envisioned. I mean, you want to really space them.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know what, you know, you need a structural engineer, but I'm thinking, you know, ten, ten to fifteen feet apart.
Yeah, they have different models that just.
So just again, so you can get that see-through area.
We want to make it as permeable, yeah.
Right.
Uh, and then they have like clear stories. They have little kupolas. You, I mean, you can go crazy.
Well, yeah, I mean, in your, in one of your pictures you showed, yeah, that one, I think from Waymouth, has.
Clear story.
Had a raised area just so you can get the hot air out, so it's not, doesn't trap it all at the top.
Yup, but those, those, those are off the shelf.
Yup.
Delivered in a truck and assembled on-site, so.
So what are your next steps in this? You, you've gotten our input, and I'm sure as, as things trickle in, I'm sure we'll be communicating back and forth on some things, but.
Um, my next steps are to take these comments that we heard tonight, um, do another, I want to keep it at sketch level, and, and bring it back to the working group maybe, um, and we'll review it one more time. And, and then come to you with, you know, we're, we're, we promised we'd get this done by the end of, uh, uh, next month. We'll work up a cost estimate, um, and, uh, look at how, you know, certain things can be, you know, if there's a road contract that you have already out, maybe that can be parse, you know, part of this project or part of a separate project. Um, but we want to get, we want to get our estimator to, you know, really do a twenty-twenty-two updated estimate.
Yup.
We have an idea, but, um, we will prepare, um, a model of this in three dimensions so that we can look at it at different angles and.
That'd be great.
Give you.
Fantastic.
Give you something for, you know, grant writing or whatever you need.
Our goal, from the town's perspective, and I, and, and if I do not speak for anybody in the board, do not be shy, but our goal is that once we have that, we want to put an article on this year's annual town meeting in May to, that has a, a cost on it so that we can get this passed, and then we can work on the logistics.
Okay.
Uh, you know, if we can get the cost paid for and we can do grant writing and get money recouped so we don't spend everything that the town.
Yup.
Agreed to, all the better, but I want to make sure that we move forward, um, in doing this. Because as you saw from the comments, uh, and then there were also lots of comments on social media about this building that people really want, that fifteen years is enough and they want something done. And I.
We'll make it happen.
Can't blame them, yeah.
Yup, good.
Did I, did I misspeak? That's what our goal is?
Yes, it took, from my perspective, yes.
Uh, I completely agree. Uh, I'd love to see this go forward, um, at this annual town meeting and get something before the, the residents to, to vote on. Um, I'd also just like to thank Mr. Dunnetts. Um, I, I think it was a fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed with how you were able to pull in the elements that were, were, uh, desired by the residents based on the survey. And, uh, I'm very excited to see it move forward.
Fantastic.
Absolutely concur.
Thank you.
Could, could I just add one further comments in this segment on this whole thing?
Yeah.
Because you brought up social media, and I was going to bring it up if you didn't. Uh, you know, not too infrequently, I, I allow myself to get, uh, sucked down the, uh, social media rabbit hole at one-thirty in the morning. And I read all the, many of the town Facebook pages, and you managed to capture a lot of what was expressed there too, even if they didn't participate in the surveys, just, you know, inadvertently, apparently, but, uh, there are, were some constructive comments on, on social media, but some that were less helpful, a, a lot less helpful. And one of the latter that stood out to me was in a discussion going back and forth, was they're going to do what they want to do anyway. So why bother participating? Uh, who is they? Uh, they can and should be you, public, now, if you have comments or ideas or concerns. They should be registered now in this generative, generative process, rather than wait until all this work has been done by people who have actively participated in it, only to lo- only to loudly oppose it at the eleventh hour. That's all I would ask. If you, if you have concerns and comments or suggestions now, make them now. Uh, instead of waiting to say till town meeting to come and loudly oppose all, everything that's been done.
Thank you. Okay, I think we, did we address every one of the items on the agenda? I think we have.
Yes, so the proposed date that we're going to meet with right next.
I'm sorry?
The proposed date, next meeting date was February eighth, but let us know if that means.
Is that for the working group?
Uh, no, that would be for the next time to meet with the board.
Okay, well, I won't be here on.
That's a little tight.
Yeah, and I won't be here on the eighth either.
Yeah, okay.
The fifteenth then.
What's the next op-?
Fifteen.
Is there another option?
That's the, the last meeting in February is February fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Yup.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Okay, fifteenth, good.
So we'll plan on that.
And I will, uh, get your materials two days in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a very exciting project, and I'm glad to see it come this far, and we're, we're, I can feel the energy, you know, building. As I think really, a lot of people see a lot of different things that they like, and the more things that people see that we like, we'll be able to generate energy. Which you need energy and you need public participation and public buy-in to get to, to town meetings.
Get the ball rolling, yup.
The only other thing I'd ask, uh, was it decided if another survey was going to be done?
Well, yeah, I, it, it felt to me like we might not, but if the board wants to do another cert, you know, publish something on Facebook, um.
In lieu of a survey, I'd rather.
Give more comments or.
Well, I think in lieu of a survey, I think what we'd like to do is after your second round, after your next round of drawings is there.
Yup.
To put them online and get comments on that.
Okay.
Like comments on the actual project.
Okay.
Is it?
Can we, well, could we put option A and B presented here tonight online for additional comments?
That's what I was, that's what I was thinking because.
Oh, okay, we can do that, sure.
Because, once we do a final project, we might not meet, you know, there are more changes, we might not be able to meet our.
Gotcha.
Our deadline.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll get you that link.
Okay.
I need probably a couple of days to work on it, but.
Okay.
What's that?
I, that's good.
Okay. Okay.
And, and in the, and in the survey instructions, we would like to, in, in line with, with what Mr. Franco said, we want to get people to provide what their pros are of each and what their cons are of each. their cons are of each in a constructive way. Like, I, I don't really like this, or I like this, or can we put this into the, I like the, the concept of one or the other with some elements from the other option melded in.
I'm happy for you to provide the questions, uh, where I'll, I'll share them with Heather and then, you know, you can review them over email or whatever before we publish.
I mean, you know what we're, what I'm getting at, I mean.
Yeah.
Any constr, anything that comes out of the surveys, I don't want it to just be, I want, I want us to be concrete with what the person is saying.
But what we usually, what we usually say, what do, what do you like and what do you
Okay, that's, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
Um, similar to what we did before. And I think we, I think the survey, we, we, we had some good, you know, pos, you know, uh, not positive feedback, but constructive.
Yeah, no, I, I think there were two. I, I read them all too, and I think they were, they were constructive, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no appointments, right?
None.
Did we get confirmation about this?
Uh, yes, that will be
Oh, that'll be in your report?
Yep.
Okay, so, all right.
I'm going to skip, can I do the report first and then Kathy?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, we're going to do seven before six because that's the way we roll. Town manager report.
Okay. Announcement on existing vacancies. There are two vacancies in the Architectural Preservation District Commission, two vacancies on the Economic Development Committee, one regular member vacancy and two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, and one vacancy on the Parks Commission that we just, uh, learned of today, that one of the commissioners resigned effective immediately. So that would be a joint appointment between the select board and the Parks Commission until the annual town election. Two vacancies for Citizens at Large for the Stormwater Task Force and one associate vacancy for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested can fill out a talenting form, application form on the town website and submit it to the select board's office.
It was brought to my attention today that it may be best for some, for some people who want to, um, maybe want to volunteer and they don't listen to this report necessarily, that we have a number that somebody can call to see if they wanted to volunteer, what are the steps they need to do. Would, can that be done and is that overtaxing Elaine if we ask her to field those?
They can, yeah, call the office.
Okay, so in your reports from now on, we should, and we should make that known that people, if they have questions about how to, how to volunteer, that they should call the selectman's office.
And that happens as an actual course anyways.
But if we open it up, maybe some people don't know who, even who to call in town. So if we make it clear, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Current employment opportunities with the town. There's a part-time benefited position for a digital service staff librarian, a assistant to the sewer business manager position, which is a part-time benefited position, a full-time benefited principal assessor position, a part-time non-benefited trash and recycling coordinator, and a part-time non-benefited videographer position. And more information on those job postings can be found on the town website under employment opportunities as well. Update on invitation for bids and requests for proposals. The public safety building chiller replacement projects were received on January 11th. We received two bids with the low bid of 125,000 from Riverdale Plumbing and Heating. The total appropriation for that project was 150,000, um, which also includes the architectural services. So we have sufficient funds for this project to move forward, so.
It's a win.
Yes, absolutely.
The town's cleaning company has notified us that due to staffing shortages, they are not able to fulfill the obligations of their contract. So the assistant town manager is working on putting that, or has put it that out to bid with bids due February 10th. I have been working with the consultant that will be putting together the bid specifications for the old primary school hazardous abatement project, and those bids will be due February 16th. I also submitted a required form to the state agency that's overseeing that year mark, uh, that we received as part of the ARPA funding bill that the state passed. An update on, sorry, hold on. Monitoring the waiting room too. The Woodruff property, which is 104 Fairview Road, a notice of intent was submitted to Mass D E P and the Conservation Agent on January 5th, and this is on the February 2nd agenda for conservation.
What are we looking to do there?
This is the cleanup.
The cleanup, okay.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
So our consultant will be representing us at that meeting on the 2nd. Update on 9/25 Mass Ave. After reaching out to our environmental consultant that we've worked with from the Beta Group about further discussions with the Environmental Protection Agency regarding possible funding to remediate the old gas station site, we're, we're informed that there is funding in the federal infrastructure bill for our targeted brownfields assessment that they have on, uh, their, our site on their list for. Under this program, we would have to own the site in order to qualify, but it would pay for the removal of underground storage tanks, piping, and a limited amount of soil. It is expected that funding won't become available until the summer on the conservative side. So I have a call scheduled this week with our consultant and the EPA regarding this. So that was good news. Um, so we'll, we'll just be discussing and navigating how, um, and working with the EPA and DEP on, um, what we need to do to put ourselves, limit liability as far as owning the site through that process. Update on Nishoba Valley Regional Dispatch District. At the December 7th, uh, select board meeting, I reported that the town of Townsend has submitted a notice of withdrawal from the dispatch district. We had a meeting with State 911 and they assured us that we will not be financially impacted by Townsend's withdrawal this fiscal year or next fiscal year. So that was positive news. Also, due to the departure of the Lancaster Town Administrator, who is the chairperson of the administration board on which I sit, I am currently the chairperson of that board until further notice.
Who was the town administrator?
Uh, Orlando Pacheco.
It was Orlando, oh, so he left?
Yes.
Wow. Where did he go?
To, I can't think of the moment.
He's been there forever.
Yeah, um, up near New Hampshire border. ARPA funding. Last week I met virtually with the consulting company who will be assisting us with outreach and assembling a plan for use of our ARPA funding and reporting requirements. They will be meeting with all the department heads next week and will be attending the February 1st select board meeting to present an overview of ARPA funding, eligible expenses, and possible considerations. At a later date to be determined, they will hold a public, uh, community outreach meeting to get input on possible projects to consider, and we'll be putting out surveys to gather data as well. So that's all, um, in the works. Uh, the finance committee was invited to that February 1st meeting as well. Federal infrastructure bill funding. Last week I attended a virtual meeting hosted by Congresswoman Lori Trahan that reviewed the federal funds that will be available through the federal infrastructure bill. This was a high-level discussion that, that focused on the, what their focus is for the federal funding is economic development, climate resiliency, and equity. There will be funding for culverts, bridges, and roads, as well as a safe streets program that will provide funding for intersections. There was a general discussion on rural transportation program, but without a definition of what rural meant. So more information will be forthcoming on these funds and we'll try to capitalize on all available funding that the town is eligible for and based on our needs. Update on Lunenburg Central Project. Since the planning board approved the site plan and stormwater permit for the Lunenburg Central Project on Leominster Shirley Road, the roadside clearing at the reservoir road intersection has been completed and they expect to file a building permit, um, shortly, within the week. The construction on the 372,000 square foot warehouse is expected to begin in March and to be substantially complete by the spring of 2023. The project is expected to bring in between 200 and 300 jobs and has a low service impact on the town and will bring in additional tax revenue. So, and they've been a, um, they've been easy to work with, very communicative, communicative, so. Streetlight purchase update. Elizabeth Leyden at Mead Tellerman and Costa, who's our law, uh, labor counsel, sorry, uh, general counsel, has been corresponding with Unitil's counsel and the general counsel at DPU. Due to the other high-level dockets on the DPU's plate right now, Elizabeth was advised that an informal discussion through the department was likely the best route rather than a formal filing. On January 9th, the company provided Elizabeth with some of the same materials that they previously provided to support the cost, uh, but she's still waiting the breakdown of the replacement cost for the streetlights. She followed up with Unitil's counsel on January 13th, and if she does not hear from them within a reasonable amount of time, the DPU has, um, agreed to reach out directly for the documentation that she requested.
How long has this been going on already?
Too long.
Okay.
The tax lien auction has been rescheduled from February 16th until March 17th at 10:00 AM, and that will be held in this meeting room on that date and time. An update from the Board of Health on COVID. The weekly update on the total number of cases reported as of January 1st was 142 and the positivity rate was 14.29%. And the new cases reported as of January 8th, a week later, was 265 cases and a positivity rate of 22.49%. In other announcements, the warrant submitted articles for the annual town meeting is open for submission, and that's open until Monday, March 21st at 4:00 PM.
Okay. Any questions on the town manager report? Mr. Jeffries, is your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um, I spoke to Heather earlier today and made her aware that with her new role as chairperson of the administrative board for Nishoba Valley Regional Dispatch, that that puts me in a conflicted position because of my, um, my professional, my professional life, um, tasked with negotiating the lease, um, with, would be Heather. So, um, that's just making, again, making the board aware I have to remove myself from, um, I think discussions on both sides. And then the other, the question is, uh, do we have any information on Heather from when the, uh, town caucus will be?
No, a date has not been set yet.
Okay.
Is that set by the clerk?
Yes.
For the town, that would be a town clerk question. And we should be getting it soon because I got to believe it's generally in March, end of, end of February, beginning of March.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers, I don't know if this is from the previous discussion, if he wanted to be recognized. Could be from the prior discussion.
Your comment, your, your comment in the chat, Mr. Jeffries, is that still on right now?
Uh, yeah, Mr., Mr. Rogers, yes. Would like to, wanted to participate in the previous discussion of these, uh, landline.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, are you ready to comment? I don't know if Mr. Rogers is monitoring this, but I am going to ask again, are you wanting to comment on the, the landscape artist presentation? You requested to be unmuted, right?
Yes, but he's on a phone, phone line.
What's the, uh, do you know the code to unmute on a phone?
How nine?
I don't know the unmute. I know it's star nine to raise your hand. Um, but I don't, I, I think
Is that pound?
I want to say, I want to say star six.
Star six or star seven, probably.
Yeah, star six or seven is the unmute. There we go.
All right.
Hello? That, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. I've, I've been pressing, uh, you know, numbers here like crazy, but thank you. Uh, I'll be brief because I know, um, you have a lot to, on your plate. Uh, first of all, I'm a fan. Uh, it's, it's great to see something, uh, starting and, uh, I, I couldn't be happier. But one of the problems I have is when the presentation was being made, I had no idea where the orientation of the, of the plot plan was and where Mass Ave was and where the amphitheater, I mean, there was no, uh, correlation there. So I was, you know, uh, I, I had no idea what they were talking about in terms of the area. But I'm sure that we can, uh, rectify that, uh, which brings me to one other point. I, I can't tell you how many times I've, I've watched presentations by, by folks, um, to the boards, and, um, it's, it's very, very difficult to follow. So I would, I would respectfully request that we look at this as a community and, and spend whatever money we have to do so that, that which is presented to the, the folks at home via Zoom, uh, can be, uh, understood and, and followed. Um, a couple of, of other things, and this might be picky, but I, you know, uh, the, the presenter, uh, made reference to Rob. Well, I know who Rob is, but some people at home don't know who Rob is. So anytime a person's name is, is mentioned, I would think it would be great to, to, uh, put a handle with that and, and so the people understand who that person is. Um, I'm sorry?
I said, fair enough. That is a good point. I agree.
Okay. Um, the, the presenter, uh, talked about sewer and water and that kind of thing. And I want to make the board aware of, of the fact that years ago, we put in a new septic system, uh, for that school and it's on the right-hand side. So, uh, my own personal comment is that, you know, uh, given the, the use and the frequency, I, I, I see no reason to, to spend all kinds of money to bring, um, uh, sewer, uh, down there. And we respectfully request that we look at, uh, the potential of just, you know, tying into the, the septic field that's there and, and what have you. Um, I'm sure the devil is in the details, but there's got to be some kind of a, of a, of a system so that we can have a telephone down there so the people can communicate in an emergency situation if needed. Parking to me is, is a, a very, very, uh, big issue, and I'm sure that we'll look at it, but it's, it's a very big issue insofar as I'm concerned. Um, in the design of this area, uh, when we have the band sta, uh, the, uh, band concerts, uh, there were various, uh, uh, organizations that, that gave or sold, um, you know, refreshments. And I would, I would hope that a, a concession area, and, you know, don't take this the wrong way. I'm not looking for a building or anything, but just an area that is centrally located so the people could, uh, again, uh, go up and, and, you know, buy a hot dog or give a hot dog. I know the Lions Club gives stuff away. Uh, but I think that's something that's got to be planned for. The last thing I, I would like to make a comment about, um, is there are numerous opportunities in the design that I, I, uh, heard tonight for donations and, and ways that we could memorialize, uh, various groups. And, uh, and I would think that, that, uh, that would be an integral part of, of making this a community, uh, activity. And I would encourage the design team to, to, um, earmark, uh, various opportunities where, uh, folks could, uh, donate, uh, in remembrance of various people, et cetera, et cetera. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I appreciate all your comments. I, I agree wholeheartedly with all your comments. As far as your first comment, uh, it's, it's difficult with the size of the screen and doing these to get, I, I apologize for not orienting and not asking for that, but we will make the presentation available on the website. And when you, when you look at it on your own computer or print it out, it, you'll be, it'll be very clear because the outline of the other buildings like Historical Society, Verizon Building are there, and you'll be able to determine. And I apologize for not having that be clear from the outset.
Got a problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, do you want to go to your capital plan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Town Manager, capital plan for FY 2023.
Great. So annually, we do a capital plan that projects for five years, and we actually go out for, for 10 years in our projection with different requests. So I'll start off with what qualifies as a capital project. We, the town has a policy on capital expenditures, and recently that was amended from 10,000 projects that cost 10,000 or more to 20,000 or more, and have a useful life of three years or longer. The Massachusetts Association of Town Finance Committees defines capital projects as major non-reoccurring expenditures for one of the following purposes: acquisition of land for a public purpose, construction of a new facility or external expansion or major rehabilitation of an existing one, and examples include public buildings, water and sewer lines, roads and playing fields. Includes any planning feasibility, engineering, or design study related to a capital project or a capital improvement program consisting of individual projects, equipment for public improvements when they are first constructed, such as furniture, office equipment, or playground equipment, or major equipment which is expensive and has a relatively long life, such as fire apparatus, garbage trucks, and construction equipment. So the process that was followed by the, the town was, we have a capital planning committee which creates a capital plan that consists of all capital requests by each town department. Like I said, for five years as in our charter, but we go out 10 years per capital request. The capital planning committee's first meeting to begin the process was September 14th, and all documents were sent to departments in late September, and the capital planning committee met with departments throughout November and December and had their prioritization of projects in, end of December and the beginning of January. The forms which are sent to departments were based on the UMass Collins Center, that was, includes various categories such as effectiveness of government, the effect on the operating costs, the effect on revenues, whether the project is mandated by the state or federal government, whether there are grant funds available, and how the project contributes to such things as public safety and public health or education. The capital planning committee evaluates the capital requests based on these responses to the categories that are assigned a value depending on the response, and the project receives a composite score. But they also look at the information that, after a meeting with the different departments, and prioritize them based on the context of those verbal discussions with departments and the information that goes back and forth as far as different questions they may have when the project is discussed at those meetings. The capital planning committee prioritized 31 capital project requests for fiscal '23, and provided this prioritized list to me on January 4th, and the Town Manager may modify this list of capital projects as part of the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. This capital budget is presented at the Annual Town Meeting and then voted by the voters as a total, total appropriation for capital. This plan that's presented tonight reflects the same projects as the Capital Planning Committee. There are some minor discrepancies as far as the difference in prioritization of some of the projects. So looking at the fiscal '23 recommended capital plan, like I said, there were 31 capital requests, but one project was removed because we did not have a cost estimate for the project. That was for the Town Beach Building, so at this point, we still don't have an estimate for that project, so it will remain on the capital plan, just highlighted as a need, but is not prioritized. The remaining 30 capital requests total $4,043,049 for fiscal '23. And I won't go through all of those projects at the moment. So by category, 8% of the projects were from the schools, 4% from the police, 4% were general government, 13% were highway, 5% were infrastructure projects, and 66% were town facilities. And what I've submitted tonight for a recommendation at this time, due to providing a conservative estimate for what we can expect to spend on capital at this point in time, is to fund 20 of the 30 projects at $1,740,049. So I'll go through each of the 20 projects as I prioritize them. So for the Page Street culvert construction for 150,000, this is to replace the Page Street culvert where the bottom of the culvert has deteriorated, and the roadway over the, the culvert is showing signs of failure due to settlement in the pavement. And the design costs for this project were funded as part of the fiscal '22 capital plan. This culvert is beyond its expected lifespan. The replacement will increase efficiencies and effectiveness, reduce potential liabilities, and contributes to public safety and environmental sustain, sustainability. The second priority would be the DPW 10-wheel truck with the plow and sander for 250,000. This is for a new 10-wheel truck with plow and sander to replace the 1994 Mack 10-wheeler, which is beyond its reasonable lifespan. This truck will increase effectiveness of the apartment, decrease costs due to repairs needed on the current truck, and contributes to public safety. Third priority is for the Public Safety Building Engineering Design for Drainage for 25,000. This request is for the engineering design to address drainage and pavement deterioration that is causing excess water and moisture in the building. Paving at the rear of the building is breaking apart due to the lack of proper drainage and poor construction, and this year, mold grew in the meeting training room, and an air quality assessment was performed that the air quality was accept, acceptable levels, but this needs to be addressed. This project reduces potential liabilities, does not impact the operating budget, and contributes to public safety. The fourth priority is for the Senior Center for HVAC Upgrades for 25,000, and this would replace the four, for four new condenser units, four new coils and copper lines on the cooling system for the newer section of the building. The current equipment is beyond its reasonable lifespan, and this project would increase efficiencies and reduce operating costs. Fifth priority is for the Master Plan for 110,000. This project will supplement the remaining 43,000 that was appropriated in the fiscal '20 capital plan article for updating certain elements of the master plan, and it will be used for completion of the entire master plan. This request is based on the feedback that the current allocation of funding would not be adequate for the two elements of the master plan that was originally, the first appropriation was for, and it's more effective to do the entire master plan update at once. And this, the master plan should be updated every 10 years. The eight elements that need to be updated were last updated in 2002. This project is mandated by the state, will increase effectiveness and efficiencies. The town government contributes to economic development, cultural, or recreational opportunities, environmental sustainability, and aesthetics and historic preservation. The sixth priority is for the DPW for two-way radio system for 35,000. Currently, the DPW uses old portable radios that were handed down from the Police Department and need to use cell phones during winter road clearing operations. The updated radio system would provide coverage all over town where there currently are gaps in coverage. The project would increase effectiveness and efficiencies, reduce potential liabilities, has no impact on the operating budget, and contributes to public safety. The seventh priority is for the replacement of the K-9 for $24,250. This is to purchase a new K-9 and the related costs. So Jerry will be retiring this coming year, this fiscal year, and the cost of a replacement of a new K-9 is approximately $8,500, and the cost of the training equipment is $15,750. This project increases efficiencies, decreases potential liabilities, does not impact the operating budget, and contributes to public safety. The eighth priority is for a new police-marked cruiser, which would be a Ford Hybrid. This would be in addition to the current fleet to accommodate the 10-year staffing plan, and this project would increase effectiveness, efficiencies, reduce potential liabilities, has no impact on the operating budget, and contributes to public safety and environmental sustainability. The ninth priority is for Town Hall repairs, which were Vertex Year Two Items 7 through 11 and 13 for 96,000. This project would be for the, the building exterior work and mechanical system work, including replacement of the two furnace units that heat and cool the second floor. The two units in the attic were installed in, in the 1990s and need to be worked on frequently. The furnaces are beyond their lifespan, and this project would increase the effectiveness and efficiencies of Town Hall, improve customer service, and reduce potential liabilities. The ninth, sorry, the 10th priority is for the Flat Hill Road Drainage Design for 45,000. This project would be for the final design and preparation of construction and bid documents. The preliminary design work has been done for this project, and this is not related to the Flat Hill Road culvert where there's a separate project, this is a different portion of Flat Hill that has come before the board, board before.
Several, this has been on the books for several years.
Yes, for many years, yes.
Finally, we're getting it addressed.
So this would address, the design would address longstanding drainage issues on that section of Flat Hill Road, which have historically been a concern by residents in that area, increase effectiveness and efficiencies, reduce potential liabilities, and adds to customer service. The 11th priority is for a new one-ton dump truck with plow for the Lunenburg Public Schools for $58,833, and this vehicle would replace a 2008 Ford F-350 that was handed down from the DPW to the schools. The current truck has significant corrosion that has made the dump body unusable. This vehicle is a key vehicle for snow removal operations on school grounds, and it's beyond its lifespan. It will increase effectiveness and efficiencies, reduce potential liabilities, decrease operating costs, and contributes to public safety. The 12th priority is for a records retention project for 62,500. This is looking to hire a specialized public records retention company to identify, identify all our archive records, inventory them through a computerized indexing system, move them to appropriate storage containers and shelving. And so this project would improve efficiencies, effectiveness of departments managing records, reduce liabilities preserving records properly, improve customer service by locating archive records quickly. This reduces the overall expenses by using only the space needed and destroying records per the retention schedule and eliminating the need for additional storage space. Priority number 13 is for a new utility tractor rotary mower combo for 170,000. This piece of equipment would replace the flail mower that has an attachment on the trackless tractor. Attachment is approximately 13 years old, is frequently out of service for repair, and is undersized for our current needs. Roadside mowing is among the top resident complaints for the DPW, and this piece of equipment would allow for an increase in more efficient mowing and clearing capabilities. The equipment will include a replacement of an attachment that is beyond its expected lifespan, increase effectiveness and efficiencies, reduce potential liabilities, add and expand customer service, decrease operating costs, and contributes to public safety. Priority number 14 is for Marshall Park Survey for 25,000. This project will fund a property line and topographic survey, and the survey will be used in the future design improvements that will be completed in fiscal '22, is currently underway. And this project would reduce potential liabilities, does not impact the operating budget, and contributes to cultural and recreational opportunities. Priority number 15 is for the Senior Center. This is mostly repairs to the roof. This is identified in Vertex Items Number Four and Seven for $35,661. So this would replace the section of the 1998 portion of the roof that has not been replaced, and this has reached its expected lifespan. This would reduce potential liabilities and will not have an impact on the operating budget. Priority number 16 is for a new one-ton dump truck with plow for the DPW for 58,000. This vehicle would replace the 2012 Ford F-350 one-ton. This current vehicle is at its reasonable lifespan, and a new vehicle will increase the effectiveness and efficiencies of the department. Priority number 17 is for a mower for the Lunenburg Public Schools for 45,000. This piece of equipment would replace the 2000 Toro for 55D mower with a X Mark 96, and the availability of the parts for the current piece of machinery are becoming a problem as they are particularly related to the hydraulics. This project will reduce the operating costs and contributes to environmental sustainability. Priority number 18 is for the Brooks House, Vertex Items Number Three and Four for 24,000. This project would replace the stone foundation and remove and replace the deteriorated steel columns and replace with new sonotubes. Replace, this, this would replace the stone bearing at the northwest corner of the building with sonotube foundation. This project will reduce potential liabilities and contributes to aesthetics and historic preservation. Priority number 19 is for a new police-marked Ford F-150 responder for $67,805, and this would be in addition to the current fleet as there is no multipurpose vehicle. The truck would allow for towing of the two utility trailers and the boat, and during the winter months would be used for patrols during inclement weather and to transport snow removal equipment to assist the elderly. Sometimes the PD goes out and helps clear out seniors out of their driveways. The project would increase effectiveness and efficiencies, reduce potential liabilities, and contributes to public safety. Priority number 20 is for the Old Primary School for the Vertex Hazardous Materials Abatement for 371,000. This project was identified in the Vertex Property Condition Assessment to be done in years zero through one, which is 2018, for the abatement of hazardous materials. Project would reduce potential liabilities, would not impact the operating budget, and contributes to public safety and public health. Projects that were not included in tonight's plan included a, to install a generator at the Senior Center, and that would, the reasoning for that project was to provide, make sure there was continual power in that building during power outages, because there is a fire suppression system that requires a power supply and has to be manually operated when the power goes out, and so that constantly has to be monitored. And this caused an issue during the 2008 ice storm that caused some water damage in that building. This would also allow for a secondary emergency shelter that was identified as a need by the Council on Aging Director and, and confirmed with the, the Fire Chief as far as having seniors in a separate population space that, that would strictly be at the Senior Center instead of at the school. Another project was for the Ritter Repairs. That was for the Evaluation Hazardous Materials Abatement. That was for 182,000, and the generator, I'll go back, was 90,000. thousand. Another project that was not included tonight was the senior center patio. That's to make the space behind the senior center ADA accessible and redesign and landscape that space so it's accessible for users, which they did a lot of, as I'm sure you're aware, a lot of outdoor activities this past two years due to COVID, so that they would, they were able to secure tents and do events outside in that space, but this would make it more accessible. And that was for a hundred thousand. A project for the school for AC for classrooms and at the primary school, so it's classrooms, the caf and gymnasium actually, and that was for two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred. That's to install condensers, the primary school roof that will be able to cool those classrooms and the caf and the gymnasium. Another project was for the Brooks House, Vertex Items number five through twelve, that included building exterior work and roof repairs for a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Brooks House Vertex costs in years zero through one, and that was inclusive of abatement of hazardous materials and installation of a backflow preventer for the water line. That was a hundred and eleven thousand. The senior center, a new parking lot on the right side of the building, and that was, would be between the Eagle House and the Kids Kingdom, so this, that would be for, create more off-street parking that was identified as a need. That project is a hundred and fifty thousand. The public safety building, police records room, to finish the space on the second floor on the police side, and that would allow for records, storage, and additional office space for two hundred and thirty thousand. A project for the public safety building, unused fire side, unused space, and that would be to finish that second floor space on the fire side of the public safety building for the gym area, records retention, record storage, and equipment storage for a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And the TC Passios Evaluation Hazardous Materials Abatement for nine hundred and forty-three The total cost of the projects that are not funded in the current plan is two million, two hundred thousand. So looking at the recommendation tonight, it uses three different sources of funding at this time, so because the budget hasn't been finalized, these are conservative estimates of what I believe we would be able to use for funding sources for the capital plan, so a combination of tax revenues of seven hundred thousand, free cash, an amount of one million, unexpended capital for forty thousand, forty-nine dollars. So when we look ahead, the ten-year capital plan, we have, over a five-year average that we spend on capital is one point three million, and a three-year average of one point four seven, but we have over a ten-year span, a total of twenty-eight million, almost twenty-nine million worth of project requests at this point in time. So as every year, this is a living document, you know, requests come up and needs change, so it's updated annually, so that number is a moving target every, every year, but at this point in time, that's what we're looking at for capital, capital requests. If our funding was to remain consistent, we wouldn't be funding between fourteen point two eight million and fifteen point nine eight million in capital requests, but this also includes the TC Passios building repairs as well as Turkey Hill, which that's both our significant costs. So, and my expectation is that both of those projects, when they're done, would be debt exclusions, so they would, if we would eliminate those projects and consider those to be debt exclusion projects where we're funding at is more appropriate every year. If you look at slide thirty-eight, this demonstrates a scenario using a foundation of seven hundred thousand from tax revenues and increasing it by two and a half percent each year, and using a foundation of five hundred thousand from free cash, and using special purpose stabilization funds towards equipment during the years that they come up. And my recommendation is that we continue to put away funding into the special purpose stabilization account, so we are able to pay for that strictly out of that fund and not have to borrow for any of those large-ticket items. So you'll see, so in, looking at the special purpose stabilization lines, those four items that are identified in those lines are large pieces of equipment for the fire department. So also depending on our end-use of the town buildings, and that would eliminate, you know, and reduce those amounts in those years. Looking at next steps, we would continue to reevaluate the fiscal twenty-three capital plan as the budget develops, and if there's additional funding that can go towards the fiscal twenty-three projects that were not funded, we would reevaluate at that point. And because we know that deferred projects will only continue to compound what we'll need in future years per capital, consider adoption of a policy that dedicates a portion of the budget for capital outlay, to have a consistent amount dedicated towards capital. We know tax revenue is a reliable source of funding as opposed to free cash, which can fluctuate each year, and this will help us establish going forward a baseline for funding capital. And plan on using the special purpose stabilization fund in years that have such large-ticket items as identified. Our current balance in the special purpose stabilization fund is approximately one point four or five million. Once we have a plan for the Turkey Hill Elementary School and the TC Passios Building, this will help determine the need for capital projects in those two buildings on the ten-year plan, and if it's funded outside the levy. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for the town manager about the capital plan from anybody? Mr. Jeffries?
I have a couple of questions tonight. So first, I just want to really thank the Capital Planning Committee and also to the town manager for all the work that's gone into getting to this point. I know it's a lot of meetings and it's a lot of time, you know, to help us out here, so first, I want to thank everyone for all that. My questions tonight are, as we look at some of the percentages that were, that were shown, and I did some simple math over here, you know, looking at the requests, excuse me, looking at the requests as they, as they come in, approximately, as your slide said, sixty-six percent of the requests were for facilities, but when we look at the distribution of how the capital plan is being proposed, only thirty-four point six percent roughly of the, of the money that is being proposed will go towards facilities. And then when you look at what's not being funded, basically ninety-three percent of what's not funded are facility-related expenses. Would you mind just, and this may be a question to Tom or to, would you mind just kind of explaining that a little bit to me of how we have arrived, how the products were selected?
Sure, I can take that as a member of the capital planning. So we discussed the urgency of the need, the effect that it would have, the immediate effect that funding the project would have on the town, its, you know, immediate impact on residents and, and/or buildings. And so in the case of, for instance, TC Passios for the hazardous waste removal, that was given a low score because right now, we don't know what we're going to do, and to spend nine, you know, nine hundred thousand, almost nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, when we don't know what we're doing with the building, at this point, there were other things that were more urgent to, to prioritize. So some of the, we tried to strike a balance between projects across departments and projects across buildings that again would have the most effect, and that were also practicable. So like one of the examples that we used for the Ritter hazardous, while people are working in there, you would think that would get a high priority, but the problem is that the logistics of working out how to deal with the building and where do we replace those people while we're, while we're remediating the building was, was tricky and was not incorporated into the cost, so we didn't really have an accurate cost of what that would be. So these are, I'm highlighting some of the things that maybe of interest that maybe caught your eye.
Yeah, and those are some high-value things, so, yeah, I appreciate that. I know, I know, I know it's difficult when you have four million dollars of requests to will, will them down. To the town manager, I noticed that the total comes to one point seven million, but as we discussed previously, I thought that we had about two point three in certified free cash.
We do have two point six million in free cash. We also use that funding for the special purpose stabilization fund, the OPEB account and regular stabilization, as well as any possible money articles that are needed for annual town meeting. So at this point in time, I'm recommending only a million out of that amount.
All right. As we talk about the project across the way on School Street, to the town manager, is your expectation that that would be funded in a combination of free cash or that that would need to be some form of voter override to approve debt exclusion?
I won't know that until I know the actual cost to give a recommendation on that.
Okay. And my last question is about rubberized undercoatings on trucks. Does the DPW, and I'm okay if you don't have the answer tonight, one of the things that prolongs the life of vehicles that salt is the salt, is having some kind of rubberized undercoating. I know I've done this by own vehicle after going through the experience of plowing and salting and not having this coating, but on a, you know, fifty-something thousand-dollar truck, this is about a five hundred dollar expense, but what it saves you is a lot of wear and tear on the undercarriage of a, of a vehicle when it's out there on the roads with fresh salt splashing back up at it. So the question is, do our vehicles at DPW have rubberized undercoatings to help prolong their lives, and if not, is this something we can look into?
I'd have to find out that answer, but I do know they wash the vehicles to eliminate all the salt and possible corrosion.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. I think the washing is a good thing, but I think the rubberized undercoating is a, is a really good protectant that is a kind of a low-cost thing. You had mentioned tonight that some vehicles had rusted out, and I would imagine that the salt from the roads is a contributor to that. So, all right, thank you, those are my questions, thank you.
Anybody else from the board have a question?
One of the things that jumped out at me, it was just minor, is, for example, we had two similar one-ton dump trucks, and there was a difference in price by eight hundred and thirty dollars. I was just wondering if, why there was a difference.
I think that was a quote they each got.
Right, they each got separate quotes.
Independent quotes, okay.
Mr. Franco?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. So this is the opening foray, and as the town manager said, we would be reassess, those next steps will be reassessing as we go along to see what other things come up. You know, I doubt it'll stray terribly far from what is here now, but we may go up or down the list depending on what's available. Current business, so we have an item discussion of annual town meeting, that's, that's going to be on from now till we have the annual town meeting, but because the warrant is open, we don't have anything to discuss. Then we have approval of minutes for November twenty-third, December seventh, and December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. Has everybody reviewed those? And does anybody have any comments about revisions or modifications? If not, I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes of November twenty-third, December seventh, and December fourteenth.
I, before making a motion, I just want to confirm that all of us were at all of those meetings before doing them in bulk. I believe that is the case.
No, I missed the twenty-third of November.
All right, so perhaps we should take that November twenty-third one separately, or?
Sure.
Okay. So that being the case, I move to approve the minutes of November twenty-third as presented.
Have a second? Well, any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
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 As a point of order, Mr. Chair, since we have one member participating remotely.
Oh, do the remote call, sure, absolutely. All right, good point. All right, so Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Stain.
Stain?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay, yes. And aye for me, so three, zero, one.
Okay. Next, I move to accept, or approve rather, the minutes of December seventh and December fourteenth meetings as presented.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call again, Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for me. Thank you. Okay, warrants, warrants, let's see. Accounts payable warrant in the amount of one million, eight hundred, thirty-seven thousand, forty dollars and sixty-four cents. Payroll warrant in the amount of eight hundred, ninety-three thousand, four hundred, seven dollars and sixty-six cents. And payroll deduction warrant in the amount of seven hundred, sixty-six thousand, five hundred, eighty-one dollars and two cents. Any action file issues? Hearing none. Committee reports, Mr. Jeffries, any committee reports?
No, no reports, just a notice that the Municipal Building Design Committee, it will be meeting after receiving the new charge next Wednesday at five thirty.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Dwyer, any committee reports?
I have no reports. The Stormwater Task Force meets this Thursday at seven P.M.
Mr. Franco?
Yes, I had the pleasure of sitting in for Mr. Jeffries at the Council on Aging meeting last Tuesday, January eleventh. Just some, some of these are points of interest. Well, in the year two thousand and ten, according to that census, we had twenty-one hundred six seniors in town, and according to Sue Dougherty's guesstimate, educated guesstimate, we are now at over thirty-three hundred in town. Just, I thought that was interesting. That one I'll defer, we have to get, I indicated I would get back to the Council on Aging on a particular procedural question on when that they should submit nominees for reappointment or appointment in the first instance to, to that board. I spoke to the Boulders issue, and that came up, it sounds like that comes up at a lot of their meetings, and what action this board took with regard to that, the decision that was made there. I was asked sort of what the timeline for that would be, and I gave my, my best assessment, and I'll stand corrected now if, if, if that's warranted, but I came to the understanding when we voted in favor of taking the legal, the injunction route, that that would be a matter of weeks or months that that would.
I mean, it's unknown, but they estimated in, in months, yes.
With regard to, there's a program, just so people are aware. Um, ju, uh, with regard to, there's a program, just so people are aware out there, there's Sand for Seniors, that came up as a topic of discussion. Chief Sullivan indicated, Fire Chief, indicated that there's some confusion over this program. Uh, the program is for, there used to be, and I see this on social media sometimes too, people asking, is there a place at DPW where residents can go pick up sand? No, there is no longer that, that, that ended a long time ago, and, uh, but there is a program called Sand for Senior, uh, Sand for Seniors. Uh, you need to be, there are certain qualifying requirements, you need to be disabled and otherwise qualify. Right now, there are, I believe, 16 people who do qualify. And also, that is administered or executed by the fire department, they'll also do a smoke detector check while they're out there, uh, delivering sand. Um, Eagle House Supporters, Eagle House Supporters is the, uh, booster group or fundraising arm to support Eagle House. The Council on Aging cannot raise funds, they, they cannot, that's, that's an improper function for them, they're, they're barred from doing that, so they, there's Eagle House Supporters for that purpose. They have two vacancies on that, uh, group, uh, I was asked to announce that, so, uh, anyone interested, please inquire there. Uh, and, an issue that I'll raise, I didn't get to raising it now, but, uh, while I was at the meeting, I didn't get to raising it before this meeting, so sorry, are, there's some snafus apparently, or at least people believe there are, with the Council on Aging with the, their emails, their town emails, so, um, I don't know if it's a question of them not re, they didn't either, to be fair. There are a couple of people that said, you know, um, it was brought up, and then, uh, there was discussion about whether they had passwords, whether the passwords are functioning, and they didn't know if it was an issue at their end or an actual functional issue for IT to deal with. We'll drill down on it a little bit more.
Seniors or employees? Um, who was having an issue?
People who were on that, the Council on Aging, that have town emails.
Oh, so the, okay, so those, those should be addressed to the, to the IT director?
Mm-hmm. So, okay, that, that's, um, I believe that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, I was out last week on vacation, but there was a finance committee meeting on last Thursday where they had the state legislators, and it was a long discussion, it was about two and a, two hour, almost two and a half hour meeting, largely with the, uh, the legislators and talking about what's going on in State House and priorities that the FinCom wanted to see through the, the legislators, uh, about budgeting, uh, all different kinds, school budgeting, town budgeting, and things like that. So, uh, it is on YouTube, the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel, I would recommend everybody on this board and everybody in the public, if they are interested in, in these discussions, to play that. Okay. Talking about state legislators, that's the next one, request from legislators for fiscal priorities for FY 2023. And town manager has presented, uh, the top four after our discussion on our January 4th meeting. Uh, and those are in order, $330,000 for the Flat Hill Road Culvert, we currently have 428,500 approved, but the last projected, projected construction cost due to escalation factors in June of 2021 was 750,000. So we're looking for the state's assistance and, uh, with that. Number two is 371,000 for hazardous materials abatement and demolition of the old primary school. This is the updated cost per the 2023 capital plan project requests. Number three, 300,000 for the redevelopment of the property at 925 Mass Avenue.
That second line, should we delete it?
Uh, and then I, and then, it looks like we have five.
No, no, that should not be there.
Okay, so the other one, all right. So then number four is 100,000 for the seniors end of building improvement, which combines different FY 2023 capital plan requests. So these are the requests that, after our discussion from our January 4th meeting, we would want to present to the state legislators, uh, as our priorities. Any questions on that?
Just one, uh, comment, um, after the last meeting, when it was asked if we could ask Parks Commission for their input on any possible projects, I reached out to them. Uh, they have a meeting this Thursday, they'll discuss it, they're not sure if they'd have anything, uh, substantive, um, that would be submitted, because they're not at that point with Marshall Park. Uh, the only possible one would be the capital project for the 25,000 for the survey, but, um, I'll wait for their meeting and, um, I'm sure I'll hear from the chair person.
We can add, yeah, we can add it before our meeting next week.
Yes, it, it will be on the February 1st agenda, when the state delegation comes in as well.
That's right, we don't have a meeting next week, that's correct. Now, you sent an email to all of us that if we wanted to speak with, if we wanted any other topics, that we should submit questions to the state legislators through the town manager. So if you have questions you want to ask, I, first of all, I would, I would recommend that you listen to what was discussed at the FinCom meeting, so that we're not asking them the same questions. I mean, we can ask them if we want to emphasize, but at least know what was asked at that meeting, I should say that. And then, any other questions that come to mind that you'd like them to address? Are all three of them coming?
Yes.
Okay, number two in old business, signed easement agreement for Lunenburg Central on Lemons to Shirley Road, do we have that, Doctor?
We do. And so, notice on the last page, so, um, just sign up top and print your name below.
That's all of us?
Yes, yes, yep.
Do you need me to come in tomorrow to sign this?
If you can come in, um, between eight and nine, if that's possible.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries?
You're welcome.
Well, that's heading down our upcoming meeting, so we have no more meetings in January, our next meeting is February 1st, where we will meet with the state legislators, among other The 8th, I will not be here, I will be away. So you are on on the 8th, Mr. Jeffries? Okay, that is our agenda, let's ask if there's any, um, public comment from the public. Mr. Beardmore is raising his hand.
Evening, um, I just wanted to, uh, inquire as to where we're at with respect to the, uh, senior tax relief effort. I recall that it is either a goal of the board or the town manager, or both, I'm not precisely sure, um, and the matter was deferred after a particularly long meeting a few weeks ago. Um, but the warrant is open now, and, um, it'll be just a couple of months before, uh, the select board will have to determine, uh, its articles for the warrant. And I think that this item in particular is going to, uh, deserve some rather substantial dialogue, uh, prior to a, uh, to a town meeting vote. So I'd, I'd like to know if there's any talk in terms of reopening that topic and, and driving it to some sort of, uh, proposal for town meeting. Thank you.
So I will speak, thank you. Uh, I will speak from my personal behalf as a member of the board. The work on that is, is very slow starting, so I do not believe we will have anything for this annual town meeting, and I think the goal will be carried forth, and we'll get something for the special town meeting, because I don't think, I think you are absolutely correct, Mr. Beardmore, that this will require lots of dialogue, because there's lots of moving parts, and I don't see that happening between now and May. Uh, if anybody else would like to add in any different feeling?
I appreciate you, uh, you stating that, Mr. Alonso, I just, you know, I, I think we should set expectations for, uh, not only for, for the boards that might be involved in that, but also, uh, for the general public in terms of, uh, what their expectations are in terms of moving on these matters, so, thank you.
I totally concur with you, and I don't want to rush anything, that's, I mean, this is an important thing for me, I, I am actually a little bit regretful that we got the slow start that we did as other things, other priorities took precedent, but I am committed to getting this, and as are other members of this board, and probably all members of this board are committed to getting this done, so I want to get it done right, and I want everybody to know what's going to be in it, so that they, we can have a, a good dialogue about it before we vote on it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from the public? Anybody's hand raised that I'm missing?
No.
Any public comment from the board? Anybody?
No.
Okay, hearing none. We are at the end of our agenda, so I would take a moment to, or take, take a motion, I should say, to adjourn. I'll take a moment to take a motion to adjourn.
So, so moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries? And an aye for myself, and so, uh, I would bid everybody a good night, um, hopefully the weather, you know, behaves, and until our meeting on the 1st, take care of yourselves out there, take care of each other. Good night.